Good evening, I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
Ms. Lee Bowman, would you please...
...to the flag of the United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Road call, please, Ms. Votch.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Isar.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votch. Okay, first item on the agenda is a presentation of the Reading Association. And with us tonight, we have President Megan Araby, Vice President's not here, but Marcy Fridella is the Vice President. Erica Swoboda is the Secretary, and Tessie White Stein is the Treasurer, and she'll collect your checks tonight after they speak. Please come up, ladies.
Hi, thank y'all for having us tonight. My name is Megan Araby, and I'm the President of the St. Bernard Reading Association, and I'm joined by Tessie White Stein, our Treasurer. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight. We look forward to sharing our great news and upcoming events with you all each year. Last year, the St. Bernard Reading Council maintained its Honor Council status for the Louisiana Reading Association. We'd like to thank our members and the School Board for allowing us to share these experiences with teachers, families, and students. This summer, our current Vice President, Marcy Fridella, and myself presented to the state on how to maintain membership. We have the highest membership in the state, so we're trying to get other districts to follow our lead and maintain their membership. We are pleased and excited to share this with other councils, and I'm still getting phone calls that they're using the presentation at theirs and having more members join. We are lucky that we had four Louisiana Reading Association State Winners recognized at this event. Ms. Phyllis Peabody, Educator of the Year; Mrs. Leann Halton, Educational Administrator of the Year; Ms. Carla Corolla, Principal of the Year; and the Joseph Davies Media Team, which consists of Erin Johnston, Kayla Sarinay, Katherine Randall, and Caroline Miller on the Media Award. Also, Ms. Rosalyn White, on the School Board won first place for educators as authors. So congratulations to them.
We appreciate that. And also, we have ordered books. We always celebrate and participate in Jump Start Read for the Record, so we're proud to say that we did order the 2023 book, and it's named With Lots of Love by Jenny Torres Sanchez. We've ordered a box of books, and we deliver that to each library. And one of the things that happens on October 26th of every year is we support early literacy and making books accessible to our young readers. So the librarians in our district will, they were given a pack of activities to also participate and join in. And this book will be read in all of the libraries that week and shared with all of our elementary students. So we're excited about our event. Also, young authors, we're really proud to report that this year we had 18 state winners, which is a tremendous, you know, award. First place, we had gold winners of six, silver, two. Second place is six winners, bronze, third place with six winners, and we have 109 district winners from our local contest. So we were really proud of that, and we wanted you guys to know.
This year, our goal is to double our membership. It was actually the state goal to get a grand slam by doubling our membership. So we had our first membership meeting at the MoMA Center, and it was baseball-themed. We had lots of donations, hot dogs. We went over events for the year. We provided literacy activities for the kids. And last year, we had 116 members, so we're going to try to double this year. The state doesn't think we can do it because we had the most, but I said, "Challenge accepted." So we're going to get those members in. One way we're going to do that is we invited OLPS and St. Bernard Christian Academy to join the St. Bernard Reading Association. So we hope that we have more community involvement this year. So we are looking forward to a rewarding year. Inside your folder is a sheet of our upcoming events that we have planned so far. We might add some, and then just a form if you didn't fill it out already, a T-shirt order form, and some pictures of just events we had last year. We did the Young Authors Competition at the school. We gave them certificates. At every meeting, we do donations to a local charity. So this is our Vice President going to the battered women's shelter to give them the canned foods we collected and the hygiene items. Justin Template presented at our first membership meeting on how to get students to write poetry. And this is Ms. Pritchard and her grandkids at our Easter event where we had a local author read and sell books. And we did an Easter A-Con for the kids. And these are a few of our state winners that attended the state conference in Marksville, Louisiana. So thank y'all for y'all's time, and y'all can just, if y'all have forums to give, Ms. Angie will take them after the meeting.
And we appreciate your support. We know you guys have been, you know, every year becoming members, and we appreciate the support of literacy. We appreciate that.
Thank y'all.
Are there any questions? Mr. Warner.
Yeah, well, I just want to thank y'all so much for promoting reading. It is very important. I can't express what it's meant to me and how often, you know, I have to continue to read and learn. But can you tell us more about Reading for the Record, Fall Fest, Game Night, and Easter Extravaganza? Eggs- Egg Extravaganza.
Eggs Extravaganza, yes, we'll play on words.
Working on my reading right now.
So Read for the Record is the one that Tessie explained. Each year, there's a book. This year, it's a multicultural book. So the librarians do a great job. I have a video up of Sarah Felt doing a mural with the kids at Joe Davies to go along with the book last year. Fall Fest, we usually help hold at Joe Davies. Anybody's invited to attend. We do a pumpkin decorating contest. Last year, they did it to Nigel and the Moon. That was the Jump Start book last year, so their pumpkins were themed that way. We also do a little costume contest. Instead of a cake walk, we do a book walk, which is a hit. We play a story as they walk around, and when it stops, whoever, whatever book I call on the ground, they get a book. And we always have snacks at every event, so stop by. We used to do a game night that was Scrabble for the adults, but we're trying to get more kids there. So we're going to do some games, like headbands, where they put the picture on there, and they have to explain it to the other kid to try to guess the word. And then our Easter Extravaganza is at Docville, and that's the one that they do at Easter A-Con. I think Barry Lemoine has a friend that's an author that is coming to read this year, and he will be selling books as well. We have art teachers come and face paint. Anything you want to add?
No, I mean, you know, at each of these events, like Megan said, we always do some sort of drive because we always like to give back to the community as well. So we decide what we're going to collect, and we, you know, also like to be of service, but also encourage students to read, pushing out literacy, letting them know that reading is fun, you know, orally talking, getting them talking, you know, that's where it starts. And so just realizing that, you know, books can be fun. It's not just about, you know, texting and computers and staying in, you know, in the games all the time, that you need to connect. And this is part of life, and becoming successful is being a literate person. So we do push that out, and we're proud of what we're doing. And we're the largest in the state with such a small district, and so, but we can, we're going to take that challenge, and we're going to go ahead and double that membership, so.
We're already at 128, I think, the last time I checked, so we're already better than we were at the end of the year last year. So we're hoping to keep pushing.
Great job. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ladies, thank y'all so much for all that you do to promote literacy. Y'all do a great job, and we know it takes extra time to do that on the side of your regular duties during the day. So thank you very much. And also, to all the state winners, congratulations to those members of the St. Bernard Reading Association, and also to all the students. It's wonderful that so many students participated, and that we had so many state winners. So great job in that. And I failed to mention the other members of the officers, not the members, but the officers, and they are Gabrielle Abity, Membership Director, Kayla Russell, Past President, Natalie Albers, the Advisor, and Marcy Mason, Events. So we thank you, the whole association, for, again, all that you do to promote literacy. And on that, I will entertain any other questions or comments. Mr. Long.
Just a comment. I noticed in the bottom picture, I see old Bernie Hambrice in that picture. She must be one of the founding people.
She was our treasurer, and then she passed it along to Tessie, but she's our guiding light.
I promise I wouldn't be long, but I'll tell you this one story. She said to me, she says, "Tessie, I've been treasurer as long as Reading Association was here, she's been treasurer." She says, "I can only pass this along to somebody that I trust, but you have to promise me that this association will flourish." And so I took that with great honor as she passed the checkbook along. She says, "I need to pass this along to you," but this is not just, it was like a torch, you know? I felt like, "You must keep this alive." I'm like, "Okay." So I take that duty seriously, and when everybody else comes along, we will keep it alive, right? So that was serious. And Ms. Bernie is still active. She's still a state member, and she does support.
That's wonderful.
And so, yes.
And we have five student teachers that joined so far as well, so we love to keep seeing it going.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any comments? It's good to see Bernie is still involved also. I taught with her in this very building years ago. Go ahead.
I'm going to miss Scrabble night.
We'll arrange one at your house.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thanks again, and thank you for coming tonight. Next item on the agenda is the Red Ribbon Week. And with us tonight, we have Mr. Charles Casor. And we have some students also from Chalmers High School joining him.
Ladies, why don't y'all introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Abby Brown. I'm a 10th grader from Chalmers High.
And I'm Emily Brown. I'm also a 10th grader.
And these ladies just happen to be with us tonight because of mom and daddy. And coincidentally, when we did the initiation for all of the freshmen, these two girls were actually here because daddy was working, and they was the inspiration to start the ninth grade year with a real sense, right, of excitement? And they were cheerleaders, and we cheerleading in the start of our ninth grade year. I think it was a wonderful start. So I just think that it's only appropriate that they're here again. It makes me so happy. So you guys, there's much to share, and I promised everyone I'd keep it to two hours, so you don't have a thing to worry about. So as we begin, I guess, obviously, it all starts here. And for those of you who are new board members, there are, there's a selection of ribbons through the years. This is my 31st year doing this, believe it or not. It's just hard to wrap your head around how time moves along. And since our district has begun to adopt themes yearly, I have taken that and attempted to make that centerpiece for what we do through our drug prevention program. And the beautiful work that you see both in this ribbon, as well as the banner, which is behind you and in front of some of you, build your legacy. You know, we have taken on the concept this year of legacy. And it is so important that this message of prevention is continually presented in a positive fashion. So often, young people think we're punishing them by not wanting them to do drugs and alcohol and smoke, because that's what the media promotes. And it is, right? It is so important that we help our young people understand, "We want the best for you." And the more that our message can be presented in, "You are too good for drugs. You're too good for violence. You're too good for a destructive path." Our plan, God's plan, the community's plan, is for our young people to prosper. So that is sort of the guiding statement that will be pushed through, basically, starting this Monday with our middle school and our high school kids. Hot off the press, I literally just put on your desk, the schedule that will take place with an amazing group of people. Mr. Warner has had the privilege of seeing them previously. They were called Epic Assemblies. They are now THA rather than THE, the MASH unit. And these folks come in with a very positive but earnest message of just that, that your life matters. The decisions you make are going to help determine where it all goes and how it goes. And what was doesn't have to be the future. And that is so very important for our young people. Kids make mistakes, and it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to end there. It doesn't have to end there. And so hopefully, that our middle school and high school kids will begin to see and understand what that word means to them. That legacy is their life as it moves forward. So that's what will be taking place on a large level. And you guys might remember when I spoke to you in last year, when we talked about the whole historic journey of Red Ribbon Week. You know, under the Reagan administration, the Reagans understood the power of PR, the power of being able to bring a message forward. And over time, what has taken place, the messaging kind of fell to the side, and it was all about clinical work with kids. You've got to teach them, teach them, teach them. Well, I think it's kind of become full circle. The powers that be realize that it is a combination of messaging, community, and education. And as those pieces come together, we can most effectively, when children want to, most effectively, begin to make a difference. So that will be taking place all next week, and then the following week, we were just able to put things together. And so our fourth and fifth graders in all of the elementary schools, the following week, will have individual school rallies that will take place at their school, very upbeat, but with the same delivery message of a legacy of drug prevention, smoke prevention, vaping prevention, which I'll talk about in just a second, and so very importantly, violence prevention. So that's what's in store in the next two weeks. And as we conclude the month, that's technically when Red Ribbon Week concludes, on the 31st of October. So what we've done within our community, we've taken basically a week and made it into about a two-and-a-half week process, because there's so much that's going on. Excitingly, at the same time, and you see these three large displays that are in the room, all three of these will occur at every middle school, as well as both sides of the high school, as well as at Raleigh. And for the next two weeks, Ashna Personnel will be at our middle schools, in science classes, in 10th grade health classes, so that our students hear and see both scientific as well as social issues about the incredible dangers of vaping. We are going to systematically take, from fifth grade through our 12th graders, and every kid this school year will hear and see how critically important this message is. So that will be occurring these next two weeks. Elementary school will occur probably during November. It's going to take a while. But Ashna has committed, at this point, three people to be part of this process, because they know how serious and how truly dangerous vaping has become. Adults, people in the community, young people innocently think this is a much safer alternative, when in fact, as you study it, the induction of very serious chemicals, from toxins to heavy metals, all of those things are being introduced. And once again, just like with tobacco, you've got this kid that smokes till she's 80, and she's still kicking. But this poor kid, by the time she's 40, she's got COPD, and she's a walking health catastrophe.
How did you get like that?
I know. How in the world, right? And so it's still very much not understood why individual health reacts the way it does, but nobody's got a crystal ball. And I think the more that young people can realize that if we can move forward protectively and not feeling like you're being punished because you're not getting to vape, I think it will be a move that could save young people's health to a great degree. And I guess, ladies and gentlemen, that's the quick version of this. Any questions?
Okay, any questions at this time?
I have a question.
Mr. Warner.
So the Epic Assemblies are now called...
And they've been for the last three years.
What's it called again?
THA.
THA.
MASH unit. And the concept of, you know, coming in with crisis, like, you know? That's the concept.
And those are going to be at the...
The Cultural Arts Center. And I would invite you guys, come see the magic. Really, come see the magic.
So the Parish Cultural Arts Center, or?
Our building, at Chalmers High School. Yeah. So elementary will not be there. The elementary children will be the following week at their own school site, because we want to make it very pep rally-ish, you know? Trying to, again, center it in a very positive environment. But the middle school and high school kids will be at the, on main campus, at the Cultural Arts Center.
And I would encourage board members, if you do get a chance, try to make one of these sessions, and watch. It is really eye-opening experience.
And there is one other piece that I almost forgot to share with you. You have a packet, and we very fortunately have worked with the Metropolitan Human Service District. Those people have become such allies to the work that we do in St. Bernard. They commend the work that we do. They commend Ms. Votch in that what funds come in are spent for the betterment of kids, and that's sincere, you guys. That the monies that come in for prevention go directly to the things that we're able to do for kids, either in direct instruction or getting kids involved in positive activities. And so the new program that we will be doing, this is the new Second Step program for middle school. We've been doing Second Step there for a while, but this is an all-online, very youthful, you get my drift? Very with-it, very now type of material. And if you look at the lessons, working with groups, friends and allies, considering perspectives, disagreeing respectfully, being assertive, recognizing bullying, bystanders, emotions and brain-body, calming down strategies, you know? All of these things are exactly where young people are right now. And so we are in earnest trying to help young people cope with the world that's around them. So any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Are there any questions? Ms. Lemoine.
Not a question, but just a comment. First, ladies, thank you for being with us this evening, and thank you for taking part in the pep rally as leaders at Chalmers High, helping to set the tone for the new students coming in. I know that takes a lot of courage to get on the microphone and do that.
And literally dragged it. I mean, like, not even do you want to do this, like, come on, girls, right?
So that's, we thank you for your leadership and service. And I also just wanted to acknowledge a thanks to Ashna. I'm so delighted to see that we're really taking the lessons that we're doing, not just for Red Ribbon Week, but for a comprehensive drug prevention program, and taking this to the next step, to really talk about the science behind drug use and have those medical professionals in the classroom. That's really wonderful. So thank you for continually taking us to the next level with our drug prevention program, because, as you said, this is, it's so important that Red Ribbon Week brings awareness during that week, but really, for us, it's a whole month. But these prevention strategies and lessons are infused throughout the entire year. And looking at the updated curriculum for Second Step, you know, these are the things that we keep talking about, cyberbullying, you know, drug prevention, communication skills. So thank you for your leadership over this effort, and to all the teachers who are helping to communicate this continually, not just during Red Ribbon Week, but throughout the year. Thank you.
And we try to bring in other voices whenever possible, because, you know, you can be the most dynamic teacher in the world, but sometimes hearing the message from another voice has power. So the community involvement piece to this is so very, very important. It really is. I'm very grateful to the men and women who are part of this with me. I really am.
Mr. Casor, I too would like to say thank you for going the extra step and getting Ashna involved, and of course, to Ms. Votch, putting funds through Metropolitan to get the help and assistance with our students that we need. And this, it looks like this program, Second Step, is a mentoring program, correct, Mr. Casor?
In so many ways.
It's everything we've talked about in the last few months, about adding more mentoring, mentorships into our program. So it looks really positive and pro-action, so we thank you for that. And girls, y'all have been great sports to come up here.
Literally, one more time, they got pulled in.
Yes. And y'all are wonderful examples of, you know...
And you know what needs to be said?
At Chalmers High School.
There's 2,000 more just like them at Chalmers, in so many ways, you guys. You need to know that. Maybe not quite as charismatic, but there are so many good kids out there. And, you know, the media wants to celebrate what goes on wrong, but I'm here to tell you, there's so many wonderful kids in our schools. There really are. And we need to tout that and celebrate that and encourage those kids to be all that they can be.
So thank you, Mr. Casor, girls. Thank y'all for being put on the spot tonight and all that you do. And as Mr. Warner said, the Epic Program is very, very impactful. So, you know, those of you, board members, who want to take part, it's very eye-opening, and it's very eye-opening to our students, most importantly. So thank you for continuing that. And it's called the MASH now, Mr. Casor?
Yeah, MASH. You know, like, as in the medical concept, yeah.
Okay. And thank you to Ashna for...
Absolutely. And to Metropolitan, because they continue to find ways to help us. They see the work that we're doing, and they encourage us in every way they can. So we're grateful to them. We really are.
Thank you again. Before you leave, though, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you again. Awards for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Is Mr. Fernandez with us?
I think he's hiding behind that. Getting a big round of applause.
Okay, in your package, you'll see that we, again, have received the ASBO and GFOA Awards for Excellence in Financial Reporting, 2022 Financial Statements. This represents the 30th year that we've received this award. This represents the 30th year that we've received this award, so we made 30.
Mr. Fernandez, thank you for an excellent job and thank you and your staff, Ms. Vouchet, who oversees it all. And, you know, to the citizens out there, we, it shows too that we are very good stewards of our finances and the incomes, the taxes that they provide us. And this certificate reads Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented to the St. Bernard Parish School Board, Louisiana, for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. And then the other one is from the Association of School Business Officials International, and this certificate is for excellence in financial reporting, presented to the St. Bernard Parish School Board for its annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending June 30, 2022. The Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. So, Mr. Fernandez, again, we thank you and your staff for doing an excellent job of keeping the records, the books, and we appreciate all the hard work that you and and your small staff do.
Uh huh.
And I know Ms. Vouchet has a few words. And 30 years is is a wonderful thing. And I know I ask this every year, Mr. Fernandez, but how many other districts do you know got this attainment?
In Louisiana, approximately 20 school districts received the award last year.
You said last?
Last, last year.
About them.
Twenty and a and the same equivalent amount for the GFOA awards as well.
Thank you. Great job. Thanks again. Ms. Vouchet?
Yeah, and again, I want to congratulate, you know, Mr. Fernandez, obviously, and the group in the business department. And it also goes all the way out to the schools and many people who handle all of our funding, whether it's local, state, or federal funding, because it goes down to the source level. And we are probably, school systems are probably one of the most audited entities in the country, not only for financial audits, but for compliance audits with all our local, state, and federal regulations. It is quite a feat to produce these documents. Many school districts have their auditing teams actually help prepare the documents, whereas we have, and our longstanding procedures is we do that ourselves. So when you see, how many pages is it up to, almost a couple hundred?
Two hundred.
Yeah. So it is a, it's a monumental undertaking because you not only have local monies to account for, but the state monies, but more importantly, all of these federal funds that have flowed through our school system, whether they be hurricane-related through FEMA and such, or just the regular, quote, federal funds, or these last three years, the ESAR monies that have come through, it is, it is just a monumental undertaking. And he does it with a very, very small group of people. And we have our teachers out there who, you know, or our school administrators, why do we have to go through all this? Why do I need a requisition? Why do I have to follow the bid process here? Why do I have to do these things? And these are the reasons, because transparency of finances is so important these days. It always has been, but it's in the news more and more and more. And when we produce these documents and are audited by all of these entities and we continue to get these excellent reports, it's not just our documents for reporting that these particular awards indicate, but we have had no adjusting entries, no recommendations for, no management letters where you're, where they're recommending changes in internal controls and processes. So we do run an extremely good financial operation and it meets all of the standards and we are audited constantly with that. So I'd like the public to know that, you know, it's truly an open book and we have outside entities coming in and looking, and these are the results of those outside entities coming in and making sure that we are doing everything in compliance of every local, every state, and every federal law and regulation. So congratulations.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Warner?
So we just need another 30 years.
Yeah, I'm working on that.
No, but in all seriousness, congratulations on a job well done. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you again, Mr. Fernandez. Keep up the great work and to your staff and to all the principals and teachers out there following the rules and doing everything to keep us within compliance of all of the laws. Thank you very much. I had one more question real quick. How long does it take for the the regular audit usually, when they come in and examine the books and?
Our annual audit takes about a month.
About a whole month?
Well, they'll come in for a couple of weeks and do field work, and they'll do confirmations with banks and attorneys and different agencies, and then they'll do their internal testing and review. So probably about four or five weeks.
I know it's a huge process, so thank you again, and we appreciate all your hard work, always.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next item is an update on the saltwater intrusion plan. Ms. Vouchet?
Okay, just to give a quick update, and I've asked Jason Dewey to come in and add to, I'm gonna just do a little general overview of our interactions with parish government and GOSEP and where we are. I had some discussions yesterday to get, I guess, the latest information. And as I'm sure everyone here knows, that on in the media, the projected date as of yesterday was October 28. And I'd like, you know, everyone to know, including the public, that we as a school system are members of the local Office of Emergency Preparedness, and we are an active member of that team. So whether it be hurricanes, tornadoes, anything such as this, we always meet and all of the local entities meet together and form that team. I'm on the team, David Fernandez is, Jason Dewey as well. So we're meeting constantly with local OEP, which then feeds into GOSEP. That's the Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. So we're in on all of the local calls, the state calls, the Weather Bureau information. And I think my most baptism under fire was Katrina when that happened. But in this particular situation, we are preparing, as is the the parish government. One of the good things I was told is that our water intake system, we're fortunate that our intake valves are only about seven feet below the surface of the of the water line, whereas many of the governmental bodies, it's toward the bottom of the river. So the water that we're taking in, as you know, the the salt kind of goes to the bottom, those initial intakes are not as concentrated as they would be as if we would be pulling off the bottom. Yesterday, the, I was told that our chloro, you know, chloronous salinity levels were at 45 milligrams per liter or parts per million, whichever way you want to look at that. And as you've heard probably from the news, the danger point they're looking at is 250 parts per million. So we're waiting to see how that develops. We have put in, we have purchased bottled water, which we have in our warehouse, sufficient to take us over a period of time. We have a source to continue to do that. But with the, being a member of the local OEP and then GOSEP, we have put in through GOSEP that we're supposed to get if this, if and when this thing hits, deliveries of 9,000 bottles of water a day is what we had asked for, as well as those water tanks for each of our school cafeterias. So I have put in, if you want to say an order with GOSEP, for at least 15 of those water tanks to be brought in and to kept, be kept replenished. So we feel that we're in, you know, good shape in terms of drinking water and in terms of our water for cooking and those types of things. Now, from the parish level, you know, I was told that, you know, they've got the barges coming in with the fresh water, I'm sure that you've heard on the news, and they have secured two of those reverse osmosis units, which each one should be able to run through a million gallons per day. So they feel pretty confident that will carry it. Guy McGinnis was telling me yesterday that down in Boothville, Venice, adjust the blended water before they use the reverse osmosis machine. When they blended in the fresh water into their system, it dropped their salinity level from 780 milliliters per, milligrams per liter down to 90. So it was a quick thing, just with the blended water, before they ran it through the reverse osmosis machines. So we feel like we're prepared to the point as well as we possibly can. I've asked Mr. Dewey to come in because he's much more expert than I am, obviously, in terms of our equipment, HVAC systems, water lines and such. So I've asked him to come to give you a brief update of that, on that, and answer any questions that you might have.
Sure. Thank you very much, ma'am. Actually, not so much more of an expert. I think she's kind of hit everything and hit it very well, but I can speak to, you know, our facilities a little bit more. Fortunately, our largest pieces of equipment, which are our boilers and our chillers that facilitate our HVAC equipment throughout the district, are what we we call a closed-loop system. So we don't use the domestic water supply to continuously refill those loops. It's a closed system that very rarely needs auto-fill from the domestic water supply. So only in a case of a failure or leak would we even have to use that to then refill the system. And what we've done there is gone ahead and had our contractors treat that with anti-corrosives ahead of time. So if we have to use domestic water at all to fill those loops in an emergency situation or a mechanical failure, we'll be able to take care of that without any fear of doing any significant damage to the equipment. And that that equipment, obviously, is extremely expensive to replace, so we want to make sure that's as protected as it can be. So we're doing that. If we reach a salinity level that is concerning or alarming to us here, which hopefully we won't all, information indicates that we're not headed in that direction, so we hope that remains the same. But if we do, we're going to shut down certain key pieces of equipment that are not vital to everyday usage, things like bottle fillers and water fountains, things like ice makers that, obviously, if you would have corrosion and have to replace those items en masse, you know, whether it be, you know, dozens or hundreds in some cases, you know, could be relatively expensive to replace. So we're going to bring those items down temporarily, should we get to a point where it's necessary from a salinity level, and just not utilize, utilize, excuse me, those items at that time. We'll, you know, utilize our bottled water, ice packs to replace, you know, the ice maker or we'll come up with another solution for ice that, you know, will work for us at that point, but we won't use that equipment and machinery during that time. I noticed today, too, in in the media, we actually had some good news regarding this. It seems like the sill is working well so far, and we actually may have had a small retreat in the saltwater intrusion today, which could potentially push this back even further. Yes, so, or if we were to get very fortunate, perhaps not even allow it to reach us at some point. So we'll find out some more on our next call, you know, with local and state authorities, and of course, be monitoring that very closely. But for right now, we feel very confident in the measures we've taken. We feel that our district is is secure and protected from the intrusion and corrosion possibilities as as possible, and we're doing everything we can, you know, to protect our facilities and, of course, our communities, yeah, taxpayer dollars, obviously, with these with these facilities. So if there are any questions specifically to something that you may have had concerns about, I'd be happy to do my best to answer those at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Mr. Long?
Mr. Dewey, Chalmette High School, don't they run on a chilled water system for the for the air conditioning?
The the majority of our facilities run on chill water systems. Like I was explaining, those chill water systems are a closed loop. So the water that's in that system now is the same water that's going to be in that system a week from now, a month from now, two months from now, with the exception of if we would have a mechanical failure, something we don't anticipate, of course, and is not common, then we could lose water from that loop and then have to refill it. But obviously, we don't expect that to be the case. And then even if, we've already treated those closed water loops with anti-corrosive chemicals that will help us to mitigate any damage if we have to.
Okay, so Chalmette High School is not different than the other schools? Thought at one time it was, but?
No, sir. All of our chill water systems for our HVAC systems are on closed loops.
Okay, thank you.
Same same for our boiler systems, too.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions at this time or comments? Okay. So, Mr. Dewey, bottom line, we're going to keep the students safe with bottled water and drinking drinking water, and you got it under control if it happens, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We're hopeful that this is actually not going to be as impactful as maybe it was thought it would be just a few days or a few weeks ago. And if it is, we feel that we're very prepared and, of course, we're going to keep everybody safe and secure.
Great. Thank you. And Ms. Vouchet mentioned large water tanks?
We just drive them up, they will drive them up to the cafeterias and we'll hook them up, and that will be fresh water coming in to do any cooking or whatever we would need.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I was trying to envision?
I know.
The large tanks, it's like, okay, how do we get them here?
That's what GOSEP does. They have assured me they will do that, so.
Okay, we shall see.
They're usually, excuse me, usually trailer-based. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So it won't be a septic tank?
No. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Warner?
Just a statement, you know, saltwater intrusion, droughts, tornadoes, tropical storms, hurricanes, just bring it on, right?
At this point, Mr. Warner, yes, sir.
Parish School Board is ready, and thank you for all your efforts. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you again, Mr. Dewey.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate all your efforts. Okay. Next item on the agenda is education. Ms. White?
Thank you. On page 3.1 on the agenda is Teach St. Bernard's Performance Profile. And here's the next, Dr. Kristin, thank you very much. Good evening. So today I'm going to present on the Teach St. Bernard 2122 School Performance Profile. The Teacher Preparation Quality Rating System is designed to provide aspiring educators with information regarding the quality of teacher preparation programs, preparation providers, as well as to provide teacher preparation providers with meaningful information for improvement. Each provider receives a performance profile that includes information regarding the quality of preparation experience, the extent to which they are meeting Louisiana's workforce needs, and the impact of their program completers on student learning. The overall quality rating and score is comprised of three domains. The first one is Preparation Program Experience. Second is Meeting Educated Workforce Needs, and the third is Teacher Quality. Due to the waivers of test scores during the pandemic, VAM Effectiveness Data is only available for 2021, 2022. So that was not part of this school profile. 50% was the Preparation Program Experience and 50% was Meeting Educated Workforce Needs. The scoring is based from a Level 1, which is ineffective, to a Level 4, which is highly effective. I'm happy to say that Teach St. Bernard received an overall quality rating of a Level 4, highly effective, and an overall quality score of 4.0 out of 4.0. Our two domains, our Preparation Program Experience, received a Level 4, highly, highly effective rating and a score of 4 out of 4. And then our domain Meeting Educated Workforce Needs had a quality rating of a Level 4, highly effective, and a quality score of 4.0 out of 4.0. Now, for, if, this looks at over a three-year period from 2019 to 2022, and we had 40, I mean, I'm sorry, 58 completers of our program for Teach St. Bernard, currently enrolled for the for Teach St. Bernard. Currently enrolled for the twenty-two, August of twenty-two to August of twenty-three, which is this year, program, we have twenty-eight Teach St. Bernard candidates currently in our program. So I'm very happy and very pleased with that. Any questions for me regarding, Ms. Votch?
I would just, I'd like to comment, you know, to have a highly effective rating of four on these teacher preparations program is not easy to attain, especially on the professional practice piece, where you've got a team of people coming in to make sure that the training that we provide, um, is, is good training. Class Measures was the national company that came in, uh, and did this for the State Department for all the teacher prep programs. And we're one of the few districts, or the few programs, that actually got the quality rating of a level four, highly effective, on that professional practice piece. So I think we're, you know, we're very, very proud of that, and we hope to continue as we go along. Um, there are other components to this score, as Dr. Sotomayor outlined, in terms of, are we meeting the need of the school district? And, um, you know, the preparation for, um, our students. So you can see what our program does. I mean, even if you look at that third page, you know, we're the one, our program is in orange and the state in gray, um, and the certification area need is in blue. And we outpace the state significantly in our performance in this particular, in our particular program. So, um, I just wanted, I wanted her to, to share this with you. Um, Dr. Sotomayor is taking this over, uh, prior to her, I mean, she was on the faculty of the, uh, of our Teach St. Bernard, and she does a lot of the literacy training. Um, she also teaches as an adjunct professor at universities within the New Orleans area, as well as working for us full-time. So she's extremely busy and knowledgeable. Um, but prior to her, we had Alex Snyder involved in this, and Dr. Raviota as well, over this three-year period. So we hope to continue with the effective program, because the colleges and universities are not able, they're not graduating enough, uh, certified teachers, and we've now had to get into the business of doing, um, certification ourselves. So we're very, um, I guess, pointed in what we do, when we accept people in areas of need within our school district. So it's, it's a good program. It stretches us tremendously. Uh, there are many Saturday sessions that she's coming, uh, you know, that Dr. Sotomayor runs. I would love to just say Kristi. Saying your last name over again like that is tough. But anyway, many, many of the Saturday sessions that, um, she's runs, she runs and is responsible for in planning, and then really providing mentors and the time with all of our Teach St. Bernard candidates is, is extremely, it's very time-consuming and human resource-heavy. So we're asking many, many of our, um, employees to do this in addition to their regular duties. I know Tessie White, that you saw earlier, deals with the mentors within the programs and such, which is a critical piece. Uh, so we're proud of the program. We wish we didn't have to do it. We wish that we would be getting competent certified teachers out of colleges and universities, but that is not happening. So we need to grow our own and, uh, train our own, it seems like. So I just wanted her to share this with you, because these just came out recently.
Any more questions?
Ms. Votch, what's the group that comes in to, um, evaluate the program? Well, the one who did the latest evaluation was Class Measures, but there's an RFP out, um, at the state level. I don't know, have you gotten word on who the new group is?
No, we have not.
You know, they have to put that out there nationally, and then choose the company or the, who is going, the accreditation group that will come in and review, uh, the programs. So whoever comes in to evaluate us is from the State Department, or? Actually, it's from a vendor that the State Department contracts with, and it's usually a national group. Okay. So we're being evaluated from outsiders, not within? Right. So this is, this is great news. Um, you know, level four attainment in, you know, most areas, and we're way ahead of the state. And, um, you know, I just want to say, great job to you and to all those other administrators and, um, people who help train our new teachers.
It takes a village.
Can you just mention the people here? Yes, please. Who contribute to this effort?
So part of our, our faculty contains Stephanie Sago, who is, um, a curriculum coordinator, Rebecca Gio, I'm trying to think of everyone, um, Alisa, Alicia Capstick, Crystal Kennedy, Allison Gro, Joseph Balone, um, let me think of, I know I'm going to leave somebody else on, I'm, I'm going to feel bad. Um, I'm trying to think of who else. We also have Jill Schofield, our, our instructional coaches from the high school, they come. Melissa Moynan, wonderful. She, um, they help present. We also sometimes bring in outside, um, presenters if we feel like it's beneficial for our candidates. Because remember, we're developing our candidates into teachers, into educators. And so they need lots of support, like any new teacher would need. Um, and even more so, I'm trying to think if I'm leaving anyone out of the faculty.
I shouldn't have asked you that.
Right. Well, I'm just, I'm just...
I'm going to leave somebody.
Because we have different people that come in sometimes to present, so I don't think I'm leaving anyone out, but...
And we bring in also outside groups from...
Ronald Abear from the high school comes in sometimes to help.
We bring in people from LSU. We'll bring in people from the universities in order to make presentations with George Jermaine to those areas. We'll bring in mental health experts. So it's a wide variety that we will bring in if we don't have the, maybe the expertise on, on our own kids.
And we also have our literacy coaches that are also supporting our Teach St. Bernard efforts. They've been also coming on Saturdays to help out. So it really, like I said, anytime I call anyone in our district and I'm like, hey, I think you're really great at this, and we need some support, they come. We're very blessed with, um, great educators and support in our system.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and to the entire team who comes in and works additional hours to make these, um, these, this program work. And it's, it's individuals who have bachelor degrees, correct?
Correct.
Dr. Sotomayor. And, and so they already have a degree, and we're just training them to teach in the classroom.
Correct. So they'll have a bachelor's degree.
They'll, they'll have a, at least a bachelor's degree, and they must have passed the content area of the National Practice Exam to demonstrate that they know the material, they know the content. So what we're doing is to help them become good teachers in delivering that content. So they have the degree, they have the content knowledge, they just don't, they don't know how to teach. Teaching strategies and things that they, and differentiation for students, and accommodations for special needs students and such. So everything that you study and you learn about to become an effective teacher, then this is what we have to, you know, we need to do with, um, these particular candidates. So they have the degree, and they have the content knowledge. So it's the teaching strategies that we need to help them with.
And in many instances, they're getting really on-the-job training that, based on the programs that they will, uh, use in the classroom. So a little different than in colleges when it's taught, um, a more, in a more general way. They're actually having someone hold their hand through the whole process. So it really is, I have to say, I mean, we really turn up really effective, um, candidates, I feel like, so.
Well, great job, and thank you so much. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And we have one more question.
Yeah. Dr. Dr. Sotomayor, you got it right.
You got it right.
So the total number of completers, how many of those are actually teaching? And you may have mentioned this in, uh, in your presentation.
Right. I did not, but I want to say we are approximately around ninety percent of our completers are still with us. You know, we retain, which is wonderful. Um, we like a hundred percent, of course.
Right.
You know, but, um, it's around ninety percent.
It's higher than the retention rate for new teachers?
Yes. And again, I also think it goes back to the layers of support that we have for our candidates. Um, they all have a mentor. They also have a coach that's coaching them. And they also have another layer of a facilitator. So three different support systems to go in to say, hey, what can I help you with? What else can I do to improve your instruction? Um, they, so it's a very valuable process, I feel like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from the board?
I have one more question.
Okay. Just one more. How many teaching hours do they need to do before they graduate?
So, of course, they're in the classroom teaching this year. So, you know, as far as that's, they're actually teaching in the classroom.
Okay.
Um, but as far as content now, um, hours, just in literacy alone, it's approximately about a hundred and thirty-five hours, just in teaching. You know, everyone's a reading teacher, um, no matter what you teach, even if it's math. So, I mean, that's not counting also all their coursework. We have classroom management domains. We have, um, besides, just instructional practices. So total, we don't, it's because we're not credit hours, we're, um, we're not giving them that. There, it's more contact hours. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item three point two is an update on reimagined grants to enrollment and career and technical education courses. Ms. Aleen LaBeuf?
Hi. Good evening. I'm Aleen LaBeuf, the Career and Technical Education Dual Enrollment Coordinator. I am here tonight, along with Mr. Eric Durr, who's the advisor. We work together to make all the things we're going to talk about tonight possible. So we're a team there. Uh, we're going to start by talking a little bit about the close of last year and some of the things that we finished out last year with. We had about four students, what, we had four students graduate with that associate degree in Applied Science and Aerospace Manufacturing. And I want to take just a moment to talk about some of our previous grads that had the same degree. In twenty-twenty-two, we had two graduates, I'm sorry, four also that graduated with this degree. And they recently wrote me a letter to kind of give me an update on what they were doing. So those four graduates had an apprenticeship at Lockheed and Boeing, where they had their apprenticeship. They went to work there. And this apprenticeship led to a full-time job for all four of those students. So one of them was really young. She kind of had a late birthday, so she wasn't quite nineteen yet, and she has a full-time job working at Lockheed, Martin, at, at nineteen. So it's just a really good experience for her, and the other three as well. They all had full-time positions at just a very young age. So they were able to graduate high school with that associate's degree and have full-time positions right out of high school. So it's just an awesome opportunity for them. Uh, two of our twenty-three grads were able to start college with all sixty credit hours, taken to start in college as juniors. And they're also participating in that same apprenticeship program as well. So they are going to start and have that same opportunity as those other students as well. And Lockheed and Boeing will help pay for that college experience as well for them. So just awesome opportunities that they're having by participating in that associate degree program through that partnership that we have with Nunez Community College. Our CTE students close out the year getting over seven hundred and fifty statewide basic or advanced credentials. That's all of our students, freshmen through seniors, that we were able to get in that one school year. Okay. And we close out that school year pretty strong, taking us to our twenty-twenty-three school year, where we are now. So just kind of an update from last year, we have, um, added a new dual enrollment course. So we have thirty-six credit hours that we offer on Shumet High's campus. So if you think about your typical first year of college, or just your first college year, you take about fifteen college credit hours your fall semester, and fifteen college credit hours your spring semester. So your first year of college is thirty hours. We offer thirty-six college credit hours throughout your high school experience. So we're paying for your, essentially, your first year of college while you're here at Shumet High School without leaving our campus. So all of those credit hours can be taken on our campus without ever stepping foot off. And a little bit into your sophomore year, right? Because we offer thirty-six. Uh, we added the US government, who are freshman class, so that's kind of their civics US government class that we're piloting this year, and the kids are doing pretty well with it, um, even as freshmen. And that, uh, two of those classes, and several of them, but are all academic courses, but those, that first college algebra, that English, that composition that gets them when they go to college, those classes that kind of get them kicked out and discourage them, they're able to knock those out in that safety of our, our high school. And it really helps them kind of keep going when they're in college. So it's knocking those out while they're with us, and keeping them in that safer environment, and giving them that strong footing when they go to college. Uh, we're able to do that because we have nine credential adjunct instructors at our school. We have three teachers that are working towards their becoming adjuncts. We have two that are going to finish this year, which is going to help us out, uh, financially tremendously, because the classes, the cost of the classes reduced drastically when our teachers become the adjuncts, full-time adjuncts. So if you look at the bottom of your sheet, we have about, uh, our students, according to our master's schedule right now, currently, so all things static, they will take over two thousand nine hundred hours of college credit just this school year. And that is only academic. I'm only talking about academic on our campus coursework. We also have our associate degree programs that we offer. We offer over eight different associate degree programs that our students can take. This year, we have just two seniors that are enrolled in our associate degree programs. It'll be the first time, though, that we have students that are taking a Louisiana transfer degree program. So it's our first Louisiana transfer degree. This concentration is in business. We also have one that's taking the teaching, Associate of Science in Teaching. So we'll have our first two that are not aerospace or P-Tech, and they're both doing well, and they're going to finish strong and get those. And an interesting fact about those students is that they're also very involved in our high school culture. They're athletes, they're participating in clubs, they're involved in the high school experience as well as being an associate degree student. So they found a way to kind of mesh both those worlds together and keep up with both experiences. We have ten students right now seeking an associate's degree as a junior. And that's from a variety. If you look at it, we have aerospace, P-Tech, teaching, and then some transfer degree students as well. What's interesting about one of those students is that she is, was, as a sophomore, extremely, extremely bright and wonderful, and she participated in our Operation Spark Summer Program. So in the summers, we offer a jumpstart summer program where students get paid to learn to code, um, and they get, uh, statewide advanced or basic credentials when they learn to do this coding. And she was one of the superstars of this program, and Operation Spark really loved her, and they wanted her to come work with them and to help tutor their summer students. And she was just not interested in, like, doing anything else. She didn't want to move on. She was like, eh, no, I'm done. She just wanted to take dual enrollment classes, the academic dual enrollments, and just have a, kind of a normal experience. But what she did was she attended, uh, Nunez did a career exploration program over the summer. And so she went and went to this career exploration program. And what they did was they brought them to various industries. And she was able to kind of like go and see these different places and these different careers. And they brought her to NASA. And so she'd, uh, at the beginning, told me she wanted to do an associate's degree. Then she said she didn't want to. Operation Spark, she didn't want to do anything with them anymore. But then, when they brought her to NASA, she and her mom came and saw me in July and said, I want to do aerospace manufacturing. So being exposed and seeing these careers and going to these places and seeing what, what the job really is, really made a difference. So she is on board, and she's now in associate's degree in aerospace manufacturing. And it really kind of just helped me to see, like, when I'm planning all these things, and I'll talk about some of the community interactions that we're doing, exposing our kids to these job opportunities is one of the key things that I need to make sure that we're doing and we're embedding in our experiences with our CTE students. And she's one of those experiences that helped me see that. We also have our apprenticeships. We have our nursing apprenticeship. We also have our apprenticeships. We have our nursing apprenticeship. We have seven seniors. We started off real small with those. We have eighteen juniors, and we have thirty-two sophomores that are going to be starting that nursing apprenticeship. We have our restaurant apprenticeship. All of our Pro Start students are in the pre-apprenticeship program. As a Pro Start student, you're automatically kind of enrolled as a pre-apprentice with the hope that we can eventually enroll, enroll you as an apprentice. We have only one student in our high school that had enrolled as an apprentice, as a restaurant youth apprentice. He worked here during one of our other jumpstart summer programs. He is still enrolled as a youth apprentice and is doing really well. I think he works at the Sheridan and still going strong. We do have an apprenticeship that we wrote with Operation Spark that is going to be finalized and official with, um, hopefully in January with Bessie. We do have our CTE offerings that we send students for to Nunez Community College for welding instrumentation, electrical, all of those, um, as well. Nunez was very generous in opening up some both afternoon and morning slots that they can accommodate as many students as we had available, so as many as that we could send. So we have, over the course of this year, we'll have students that are going to be taking nearly two thousand hours worth of CTE hours this year. With all that said, we'll offer a hundred and twenty-five students, more students, dual enrollment opportunities for over eight hundred more college credit hours this year as compared to last year. But with all of that comes the price tag, which is the next little bullet point. So our fall tuition bill, um, according to the supplemental course allocation that is reported by the LDOE is going to be four hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. We'll pay for that with TOPS Tech early start. Normally, in order to get TOPS Tech early start dollars, a student needs a specific ACT score as well as a specific GPA in a specific course. So they need to have the right course, the right GPA, and the right ACT score in order for us to get that funding. We'll also use our Perkins dollars, our SCA funding, our CDF funding, and our reimagined funding, grant funding, in order to cover that cost. Now do keep in mind that our reimagined grant funding is tied to our ESR funds, so that money will go away with ESR in September twenty twenty-four. Moving on from dual enrollment into our CTE updates. Our Pro Start team is, Ms. Elena Hodges is already picking and choosing her Pro Start team and gearing them up and getting them started and trying to inspire them. She had a chef come, um, to speak with them already, and it was a very inspirational, I got a chance to go sit in that. It was a very inspirational experience, and it was very awesome. She also had her students cook a five-star meal, three-course meal. So it was already gearing them up, getting them ready. They are excited and motivated, and they already have their concept. I will not share it quite yet because it's a secret, um, but they are ready. Our information technology pathway, we did add the Unity certification. We're one of the first districts in the state to pilot this certification, so I've been working really closely with the Unity partners to kind of get this off the ground. Because of that, we also are working with them to do something called Do It Greener, which is a virtual reality simulation that will work in conjunction with Pro Start to help them get the surf safe and their management kind of credential for their competition together. So it is a pilot that we're working on, but the Unity certification is a statewide basic credential that we're going to get as well. In health sciences, we added a patient care technician statewide basic credential. You've seen our hype video made by Mr. Chris Costillo. He's going to also be working with our students to get the premier pro certification. This is a certification that we have always asked our TV production students to do. He's been working with them to get that as well. So we're hoping with these three new certifications, we'll see an increase in the number of students earning statewide, uh, basic and advanced certifications. Our pre-educator students are going to their first observation field experience tomorrow. They're heading on the bus there tomorrow. Uh, we are, they typically go to Lacoste and Tris to do their experiences because it's kind of the closest in proximity. But they're going to try to branch out to the other schools just to get a little bit, uh, of, um, a different culture, kind of, to see the different school systems as well. So they're going to be trying to branch out to different school districts as well. LDOE recently reached out asking if they could do a learning visit because we have such a robust enrollment for our courses. Um, so they want to see how we implement kind of recruitment and our growth strategies for our program and how do we get so many students in our class. We recently visited a district where they, we saw their classroom, and it was a beautiful classroom, but they had five desks in there. We have twenty-eight students in our classroom, so it was just a huge difference when I went from a classroom of five desks to see our classroom of twenty-eight just the next day. And then our community connections. So we work really hard in CTE to make sure that we're bringing in our community and connecting our community to our students and also to our teachers. So in August, we had hosted our teacher professional development. And we brought in Shamet Refining, Nunez Community College, Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development. We kind of focused on where CTE and the workforce is going, which has often been, right now, what we've been hearing is kind of into this renewable energy sector uh, with the wind turbines and then the renewable energy with the refinery. So that was kind of our theme for today, uh, for that day, and learning about the job and the job market and what's going to be available for our students. Our CTE staff was able to hear the types of jobs that are going to be coming down the pipeline for our students so that they can talk to them about that. So it's bringing together all of our partners and giving that opportunity for our teachers to learn so that they can then share that with our students. We had DCL mooring and rigging come visit our students. Um, this is part of a three-part piece. So they came to present to our students. They brought some kind of, um, samples of what they do. And they had someone speak about their personal experience and their kind of non-traditional track. They didn't just go from high school to career to job, I mean, high school to college to job. They kind of went from high school to law's to then college to career and explained kind of that path. And it spoke to a lot of our students. Um, our students then filled out a survey to say whether or not they were interested in this kind of career, which will lead to a field trip. We'll bring them to DCL so that they can see the career in action. We're meeting on Thursday with DCL and GNO Inc. because what we're trying to do is create an internship opportunity for our students, whether it be in the spring or in the summer. So our students that are going on that field trip, then see that this is a career that they want, they will then have this opportunity to intern there possibly as well. So it's a three-part series that we're trying to create for our students. We hosted college and career night. We were sure to make sure we brought in as many of our partners as we could, uh, to our college and career night. We had a post from A&amp;A Mechanical talking about how it was incredible that they had so many people there and how seeing our students was heartwarming, how much interest that they had in there. We visited Nunez Manufacturing Day. Our students heard a presentation from Leitrim and learned about Mechatronics Apprenticeship that they had there as well. On Thursday, Riverworks Discovery is coming to Shamet High School where they will hear from a panel of maritime professionals, former grads from our school that now work in the maritime industry. They'll hear about careers on the river, um, how these people got their careers, what tracks, what kind of skills, what led them there. And then our students will then participate in a few stations where they'll talk about the river and the supply chain. They'll do some life ring toss, just kind of make it a little fun so that that moment kind of sinks in and builds a core memory so that they'll remember that maritime career. So build, bringing careers to them and seeing that there are different ways to be successful. We are bringing some kids to Shamet Refining. We're getting them some PPE, some steel-toe boots, some lab coats, everything that they need because they are going to be on a unit, going to a central control room and to a lab. And that's happening on October twentieth. So they all need to be clean-shaven and dressed in all their PPE and everything together. So we'll be doing that in just a couple of weeks as well. And then most recently, some of you came and spent the day with us. We brought in our women's professional network to mentor our students. I have to tell Eric Dur, thank you so much for pairing, he paired all those students, all sixty of those students with the mentors. So that's a monumental task that I really appreciate him taking on. And it was a successful event. I left in your packet some of the story, uh, survey responses that the students gave, and I'll just read a few. The students said they felt more confident after they, um, I'll never forget how powerful these conversations were. They would love more workshops like this. They wish they had more waffles and more time. They could do improvement, more waffles and, or waffles and more time. So we'll take note. We need waffles next time. Our mentors love talking to the girls. They love to be able to speak about their journey, and a lot of them just ask for more time. More time with the kids, more time to talk, more time to spend with them. So it was truly a successful and beautiful morning. That event always inspires me, leaves me happy. Sometimes it leaves me a little bit teary-eyed with the way the kids respond at the end to how they felt and what they learned. The last two pages of your document are just kind of FYIs. They are the demographic breakdown of our dual enrollment program. And they are the current pathway offerings that we have. So I give you some highlights when I do these updates. But just in case you don't know what the, what the other pathways we have that we offer, what other IBCs that we offer, you have them now for a reference source.
Do we have any questions?
I just, you know, I just have to say, you know, I see Aline at everything, chamber events, at, um, economic development events, Nunez, Kiwanis, Rotary Club, promoting this program. And, and nobody is going to outwork her, and nobody has more passion or enthusiasm for a program than I think I've ever come across. So congratulations, do a great job, and I mean that, faggots. My question is, when the, what are the, what funds are going to run out in twenty twenty-four?
Reimagine.
Reimagine funds run out in twenty twenty-four, how are we going to plug that budget, Boches?
I don't know. If you notice, she put on there the, uh, just one semester at Nunez, four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So double that because we still have the spring semester to pay for. Uh, we wrote the reimagine grant. We're very fortunate to get it, which is tidying us over until that time. I sit on the dual enrollment task force, um, for the state, and we are constantly pushing for additional funding. We wanted to get a large appropriation from the legislature this year, but we were not successful with all the stuff that happened in the legislative session. And I, I do want to say, I mean, uh, Nunez has been a great partner. During the general administration, higher ed was cut unbelievably. And funding for higher education was cut, funding at the State Department in terms of numbers of people that they could, um, employ. Everything was cut to the bare bones. As a result of that, even the TOPS program, if you notice, they try to control the tuition aspect for TOPS. They keep piling on the fees. You know, if you ever look at a student's, uh, bill, you see the actual tuition for the course, and then you see almost the same amount with a fee for this, a fee for that, a fee for the other. Well, when a student gets TOPS from the state, state only pays the tuition. They don't pay the fees. So that was a way to generate additional funding for the colleges and the universities, but not at the cost to, um, the state. What has happened is if we take, with, with the funding cuts, the higher education level, we used to have MOUs where we could go ahead and have our kids take these courses at nominal costs. If there was opening in existing classes, they could technically go in for nothing and take it. So if there was a class of, I don't know, fifteen, and they could take up to twenty, well, we could put five kids in there at no cost because it didn't increase per se the cost of the, uh, college or the university. Um, we had MOUs where we would pay maybe a hundred dollars for a three-credit hour course. All that is gone now. And what the colleges and universities and the LCTCS system have done is we now have to pay full tuition amounts. Because, and I'm not going to get technical, it goes against our institutional aid, um, issues, and so everybody is, well, we need this to operate, we need this to operate. But as we are increasing our programs and building up this energy with our kids and the business community and trying to prepare them better for life after graduation, this is coming with an increasing cost that's going to be extremely difficult to maintain. So we're looking at, um, funding sources, you know, I've, I've tried to get some of this put in through the MFP. Additional allocations, that's where the SCA allocation comes from, and the CDF allocation comes from. Those funnel through the MFP to us. Um, the Perkins money is certain restrictions to it. But if we didn't have this reimagine grant, we could not continue to expand. So next September in twenty twenty-four, you know, we, we're pushing at the state level, we're pushing the legislature. We are trying to get them to recognize if this is going to be the mission of K to twelve education because the entire accountability movement for high schools is moving more and more to these types of programs. Well, if that's where we're moving, there has to be funding tied to this because we can't keep, we're going to be making promises because some school systems right now do not pay the full cost of tuition and fees and supplies for their students. They make the parents pay them, or they will do a shared cost with the parents. We pay for everything as a school system. We pay the tuition, we pay the fees, we pay the supplies, the books, the materials, anything they need for the course. And we do that because we service a very high population of students who would not have the resources to do so if we did not step up and do it. So how do we look at a kid and say, well, you took the first few courses here, but you can't take anymore because we don't have the money to do this. So this is going to become a major issue. We're going to have to be having discussions with business and industry. They're going to have to help us with these appropriations. Um, we need to continue to justify the need for this through the MFP for one thing and into the state legislature. We have to make our legislators realize if this is what the community and the state wants high schools to do. And then that comes with a price tag that they have to help fund. And we have to go to our community and say, here are these wonderful programs for the kids. And if you want to help us with this, how can you partner with us, with our local community college, with our business community? So, yeah, we're exploring all those different ways, Mr. Warner, you know, but then when the rubber hits the road and you get the bill and you have X number of resources over here to pay for it, then we're going to have to be making some very, very tough decisions with, with our students and their families and with our budget. Because as you well know, when we do the budget, everything's important. Literacy is important. Mental health services are important. Behavioral health services are important. These pathways are important. There is not one thing in our budget that's not important. We don't have any fluff, you know, in there. So these are just tug and pull when we sit there. I know families do this all the time with their own family budgets, and, and we have to do the same thing. But we have to be advocates for our kids at the state level, and our legislators have to realize that this comes with a price tag. So all these people right now who are running for office, one of the questions we should be asking people who are running for, you know, to be our state representative. you know, to be our state representative or state senator, whatever, how do they, what do they stand, where do they stand on things like this? Are they going to help appropriate funding for, to give kids opportunities in this area? Because this is, this can make a difference in every community in this state and our state as a whole. If we graduate kids, like Ms. LeBeuf was talking about, who can walk into Lockheed with a full paying, you know, with a permanent job when they're nineteen, twenty years old. And these are the kinds of things that just give us joy as educators on one level, which should give the community the assurance that we're doing good things with this. You know, we're not just throwing dollars away. We are training and providing opportunities for kids to pursue maybe their dream or something that will help them support their families. So, I don't know. So, when you say, what is our plan? Well, we're gonna advocate and badger a whole lot of people and then sit down with the money that we have and make very tough decisions.
As a board, you know, can we do, what is it, a joint acclamation or a resolution we could send to a legislative delegation when the time fright, after the election season's over, to try to put that in front of them and say, hey, this is our program? I, I can't think of anything else more you could say about a program than what Eileen put together here. And put that in their hands and let them see the success that we're having with this program and how important it is. How big of a hole are we talking about when the, that grant goes away? Approximately?
Um, you, well, I, I don't know. The SCA allocations run about how much a year? I had that down here somewhere.
So, it's about $240,000 a year.
Yeah.
But we reserve some for our summer programs, so we don't use that much. We use about $150,000, so that we have some for our summer programs.
You see, the SCA allocation is based upon the number of seventh through twelfth grade students you have at, what is it, fifty-some-odd dollars a kid right now in the MFP. So, they take your enrollment in seventh through twelfth grade, multiply it by that number, there's your allocation. And it doesn't mean we put seventh graders in these courses. That is just a, a revenue generating factor to give everyone what they feel is, you know, a proportionate amount of money. So, we have that pot of money. That's only $200,000, some odd thousand dollars. And then, there's another part of the MFP with, so it depends on our, you know, our population, how much that's gonna be. CDF money that runs through the MFP is a certain amount of money that we could, in the past, not even use for this, but they have expanded the use. We can go with tuition with that money, but we still use it for even our programs in school. Could be carpentry programs where we're buying wood and we're buying all kinds of things for classes on the school site with supplies. So, it can't all be put into this program, because we have other programs that this helps to fund. So, it is, it's a moving, it's a moving target, but there will be a gap. And there'll be a bigger gap as we expose more kids and their parents to this. And these kids are gonna say, we don't really wanna do this, you know? Or, if I'm gonna be even going to a four-year university, the general led side of it is the academic side, you mean I can get thirty-six hours of credit? Without leaving? And then, when I go to LSU or go to Southeastern or go to ULL, I've completed at least my freshman year, and I've got all those basic courses under my belt. And I've only got, you know, the, the last three years left. And if I get TOPS, I've got four years of TOPS. I might be able to pay for first-year graduate school with TOPS, because it's a four-year scholarship. So, there's so much involved in this. And we continue to expose kids to these opportunities and try to get them ready that they feel, that they want to take these and feel good about taking them, because it's only gonna help our community. So, it's gonna expand. And as more kids see other kids successful and getting good-paying jobs or internships in the summer, I mean, I have really high hopes this pre-apprenticeship and hopeful apprenticeship program with Ochsner in nursing should, I mean, we have lots of people, I think, lots of kids expressing interest in that.
Yeah, we have, we have the thirty-five of the thirty-two that we have, along with the ones that we have. But we had a lot express interest, and there are a lot of parents that came to our parent meeting, yeah.
Right.
And it'll only continue to grow as we expand it.
You know, so that's gonna be a wonderful program, because that's gonna feed right into the health profession and supply a tremendous need that is out there. And many of our kids were thinking along those lines anyway. I'd like to be a nurse or a med tech or get into one of the, you know, health occupation professions. And if we can build, continue to build those apprenticeship programs and have the businesses, or the hospitals in this case, take them in and help mentor them, I mean, that's a huge hurdle. I mean, I'm getting older, right? I'm trying to put myself back in my fifteen or sixteen or seventeen-year-old brain. It's hard to do. But just kinda think how unsure you were and how scared you are, and you're not sure what you wanna do. So, these kinds of experiences are, mean a great deal to these kids, because it gives them an opportunity to see what they like and to have some of those experiences. And they've got some, then, some information about that and themselves before they leave us in high school. They've got maybe a little bit more direction, and that's what we need to have, so. I don't know, we're gonna have to start, you know, the fundraising circuit pretty soon.
Thank you, Ms. Vouché. Back to Mrs. White.
Millie?
I just have a quick question. I wanted to make sure I understood what you said. You all added US government this year for freshmen, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, they'll be taking that as a leap test in the next year or two. Will we be able to, I guess, is there another course that we give that students also then take the leap? I see that we do biology, but I would imagine that that is more of a biology two than a biology one. I'm just curious about our thoughts about how they're gonna do on leap. Obviously, we think they're gonna do just fine, but...
Right, so we, we do do biology two, to answer your question, with the biology, yes. So, we do have it in civics, and they are gonna pilot the civics while they're doing it. And that's kind of why we, we wanted to start it this year and see how we do as well. So, we're just kind of testing our waters and making sure that it all goes smoothly this year.
I love it, I think that's great, and I think it's a really wonderful opportunity for them to get that college experience, and that should over-prepare them for the leap test.
We hope.
Thank you.
So, as, as a daughter who is a freshman right now and is taking that class, you know, I really continue to appreciate the opportunities that they've given. I, I have a daughter that just graduated from college, and she had quite a few college credits under her belt, which, she didn't graduate early, but it took some of the pressure off. She didn't have to take fifteen to eighteen classes, because she, she had some already out of the way. So, you know, it allowed her to sort of spread it out a little bit. So, you know, Abby was speaking to Miss Monk the other day about Pro Start, because she was walking by and she smelled shrimp, and she said, this sounds amazing, like, you know? So, it just gives them the opportunity to test the waters and see what they like before they go out into the big scary world. So, you know, I hope that she continues to take advantage of all the opportunities that are available. And, you know, it's almost so much that the kids say that they, they don't have any way of knowing everything that's available, because there are so many opportunities out there. So, you know, kudos to you and continue doing what you're doing, because it is definitely working.
Thank you. I'm gonna use this moment to plug our Owls Expo that we have coming up on November fifteenth, where we will highlight all of our programs that we have at Shawmat High School. So, please come out, bring seventh through eleventh graders. It starts at four-thirty. We have the event right out on our social media, so please come out, see all of our programs. We'll have offerings, sessions that will describe them all, and then a huge expo describing all of our programs. Nunez will be there with all of their programs that they offer for our dual enrollment students as well, so.
I wanna say one thing. I wanna thank you for all that you do also for the dual enrollment, because my son graduated from Shawmat High with a thirty-five ACT score. Because with, you know, all the guidance and the opportunities that the teachers give to students to help them, support them during their years in high school also, and all these opportunities that we're opening, all these new doors. You know, you and I, we're gonna be working closely with this maritime industry that I'm still gonna be trying to work to partner Delgado and Nunez together to try that for our students. Because if we have, you know, our students coming out of high school, getting to go to Delgado Maritime School, which is only, well, right over here by Lockheed Martin, you know, for them to be able to, you know, sit in class for less than a month and make a $45,000 salary, that just definitely helps boost our economy here in Shawmat, most definitely. But kudos to you guys, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Diana?
Thank you. I wanna say, I'm probably telling my age now, but I think this program, our dual enrollment started in like ninety-nine or the year 2000. And we started with five students, and we've grown to how many total students, did you say?
Like, over 580 will take dual enrollment over the course of the school year.
Wonderful growth. And, you know, the opportu, it's just opportunity, opportunity, opportunity for our students. And the amount of hours that our students can earn college credit on Shawmat High's campus is incredible. It's, it's the amount of money that they are gonna save, not having loans, and their parents are gonna save, and just the opportunities to acquire so many college credits while still on a high school campus. And they're also able to, like you said, participate in all the activities, sports, extracurriculars, and still be a high school student is incredible. So, Ms. LeBeuf, thank you so much for your hard work and all, Mr. Derek, for all of your, you know, continued support and hard work to grow this program. And it's just growing more and more opportunities for our students. And it would be such a shame if finances was gonna stand in the way of our future in this program. So, we definitely, definitely need to get with whoever's elected in our community with the legislature and try to sit down and have a meeting, like, sooner rather than later, as soon as the election's over, and pass a resolution, but also ask for a meeting to, to let them know how important, not only the K-12 program, but the dual enrollment program within our K-12 system is, and how much benefit it has and opportunities it has for our students. So, we thank you again, and this is wonderful news. All of these programs, we know, takes a lot of coordination and a lot of extra time, so we thank you and to all who are involved, and to our community who is also involved. And I love that career exploration, as you said, Ms. Vouché, when you're a teenager and then when you, even in college, how many students change their majors while they major, while they're in college? So, you know, to have them exposed to the different careers is, is wonderful in high school. So, it gets that, that their brains going, and they get that opportunity to really feel what different careers are all about. So, thank you very much. This, this is a great report, and it's, it's, hopefully, we can continue this program and grow. Thank you.
And I just wanna add to Mr. Warner's comment. Eileen LeBeuf has done an incredible job with this program. She lives it, she breathes it. We added Mr. Dirk to the team. He's also a certified school counselor, so he has another set, a skill set that complements Ms. LeBeuf's, and together, they do a magnificent job. But every time you need something, or she's right there on the spot. I think she trains the people at the State Department. And I'll tell you, sometimes she trains your people, you know? But no, no, in all honesty, I mean, she does an incredible job, and I, I want that. I want people to know it. It's a lot of work from the detail, the little things like that people don't even think of. A kid comes to school in the morning, the times don't work out exactly right. His class at Nunez starts at one time, his classes at Shawmat High. You have to sit and, I hate to sort of babysit, but wash him awhile until the bus comes to take him, to bring him over to Nunez to complete those courses, bring him back, make sure that the times work so they can get fed during the day and they can get there and get home and back. I mean, all those logistics are just unbelievable on a daily basis. And so, you go from those very little things that you have to do each day to the big things, like planning these programs and writing for approval for the pathways and helping to write grants, grant opportunities for these programs. So, she does an incredible job with that. So, I wanna thank her and Mr. Dirk for what they do each and every day for these kids.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to add one thing to that, to that point about Eileen being a leader in the state. A week before last, GNO Inc., the regional economic development organization that serves the Ten Parish region, hosted several hundred educators, industry partners for a GNOU summit, kind of bringing together solutions for our region. And Eileen was selected for the Ten Parish region to speak about best practices in CTE and dual enrollment, and we were so proud to see you on that panel. We know that you are incredible, we know that you're a leader, but to see you recognized at that platform for our Ten Parish region was just outstanding. So, congratulations, thank you for participating and representing us so well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much, Eileen. Back to you, Ms. Dizer.
Thank you, Ms. White. Next item on the agenda, personnel changes for October 2023. Good evening, Ms. Dizer.
Good evening, everyone. You should have your changes in front of you since the last time we met, it's a one-pager. One thing I wanna point out is we're, we have the retirement of Phyllis Peabody. You heard her name earlier this evening. She was one of the Educators of the Year for the Reading Association. She's been a, a par educator for a long time. I was honored to work with her on many different occasions throughout my career. She's, we have her until December, but, and we're trying to talk her out of it. I don't know how much luck we're having, but she will be missed.
She does an incredible job. I mean, she goes above and beyond. She does things with the school website, she works with the teachers, she works with, I mean, anything that needs to be done at that school or for the school system, she's there. So, it's gonna be a tremendous loss, but we do wish her well.
One night, she helped me try to repair, when we first opened Davies after the hurricane, tried to repair midnight a water fountain that was leaking. I can remember she just stayed there with me, and we figured I'd have to turn it off. We couldn't repair it, so she does do anything you ask.
On behalf of the entire board, we thank this Phyllis Peabody for her many years of service, dedicated service, and we wish her very happy retirement. And hopefully, you can talk her out of it. Okay, are there any questions? See, some bus drivers with...
We need some bus drivers. We're always in the search for bus drivers. We also need a Spanish teacher. So, if you know anyone who'd like to teach Spanish, we're looking for that.
Any other questions? Thank you. It's good the list is small.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is the Finance Committee, Ms. Lee Bowman.
Item number 5.1, permission to issue requests for proposals for wireless network at each of the district sites.
Good evening, board members. The administration is requesting approval to advertise a request for proposals for wireless infrastructure at each of its sites. Currently, the infrastructure we have in place started at Shawmat High, was our first site, done in 2016. And then, following that, in 2017, we did the rest of the locations. So, it's time for us to upgrade and renew our wireless infrastructure.
Just, is there a budget on this? Do you know how much, approximately, what this may cost? Or are you just going to request proposals and see what comes in?
Well, the last time we did this, the two, the two years that we did, the original rollout was a little over a half a million. So I'm expecting that, if not a little bit more due to increase in cost. However, we will be E-rating this project, so we will be seeking E-rate funds. And if, even if it should approach that or more, we have the funds available in our budget from E-rate.
And what's your tone right now, the percentage of E-rate funding we normally receive?
Correct. For, sure, our internet access, we're at ninety percent, and for our category two, which would include equipment and other services, we're at eighty-eight percent.
So we're hoping that eighty-eight percent of the cost of this would be paid for through E-rate as we apply.
Correct. Correct.
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board with a recommendation.
So Sean's going to motion, and then Ms. LeBeuf in a second. Can you have, can you please vote on your...
I'm sorry. Just to... Motion passes eleven zero.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, superintendent's recommendations.
Just, you know, I just wanted to reiterate something that Ms. LeBeuf said, the Chambers Women Profession on that work had the event at Chalmitt High last Friday, I think it was, right? And the three of y'all participated in that. We want to thank you, Ms. Rodney, Ms. White, Ms. Jackson, and Ms. Dyshart came as well. So I guess it makes four. And it was a wonderful event for the girls there, and you saw some of the responses for them. And we hope to continue those events and hopefully increase it based on the feedback we're getting from the students. I've asked Ochsner to come at the regular meeting to talk about, we've entered into an agreement with them in the sports medicine program. And Lani Faust, CEO at Ochsner, will be coming at the regular meeting to talk about it a little bit and to, you know, tell you about the athletic trainers we have there and the medical professionals, and what that, the benefits for our students are in that particular partnership. Ring Day will be the twenty-seventh of October, so if you put that on your calendars, if you don't already have that. And that's always a very nice event, and that'll be at Chalmitt High School, of course, on the football field.
With Tom?
Oh, well, time is floating. It depends on after they do the, you know, the little parade and the whole bit, so probably around nine o'clock.
Okay.
That's when it's scheduled to start, but it'll be sometime in that, I guess, area of the morning. And did you have something, Ms. ...
Twenty-seven.
After, the update on the committee that you had...
Yes, the board had voted on the Safe Schools Advisory Committee, and just an update, the committee is not concrete yet. We have, I've contacted several people who said they would participate in, on the committee, but there's several others that we're trying to confirm. And so I just wanted to give that update to the school board members, and we will hopefully have that confirmed in, in concrete at the regular monthly meeting. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is there a meeting to adjourn? There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, is there a second? Second by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.